Okay, my mallet's missing, so I'm going to proclaim the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, December 21st, 2015, to order. And I'd ask you to brief our eyes for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we enter the week of Christmas, we are ever mindful of the many blessings that have been bestowed upon our community. And we see almost on a daily basis the illustrations of them, including the tremendous success we realized last weekend with the Access toy distribution, which ended up serving well in excess of 500 children from our community. So we're ever thankful for that community's support. And we just ask that everybody in our community have a joyous holiday season, and of whatever faith they are, that they take a moment to reflect on all the good things that have happened to themselves and to our community over the last number of years. Tonight, as always during the holiday season, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of our liberties, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of them during this Christmas time. Tonight, we just ask for guidance and direction as we act on the various items of business for us, knowing that each and every member of the council is here to do what they can in their best, in their own hearts and minds for the best interests for our community. We ask for all these blessings. I'm in. Alderman Brown, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, people of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Rusado?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Holman?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Botaman?
Here.
Sirone?
Here.
And Alderman McFadden is absent.
So let the record reflect that we have just one member absent, so we have thirteen members of the city council present accounting for the meetings, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, items to be removed, added or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Atack, do you have anything?
I am not aware of any this evening.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, moving then to item five, the consent agenda. Alderman Atack is Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this, please?
The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file November 2015 monthly building report, Committee of the Whole Minutes for July 28th, November 24th, December 2nd, and December 8th, 2015; Historic Preservation Commission Minutes for November 23rd, 2015; Approvals, December 18th, 2015 payroll $742,645.03; Account Payable Check Register $5,338,959.73; And City Council Minutes for December 7th, 2015. I move that the consent agenda be approved as read.
Second?
Move by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Stark, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botaman?
Aye.
Sirone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. Okay, moving to item number six, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anything this evening? Okay, moving to item number seven, the Main Street Report.
Hello. Since we're at the end of the year, I wanted to do a nice little presentation just of all of our past successes for 2015. So bear with me, it's a five-minute little slideshow, but it's happy and it's wonderful. If I can figure this out.
Click the X up at the top, on the top button.
I'm sorry.
There's an X up there, you can click and it'll go away.
I can't see it.
Down.
No, down and to the right.
To the right.
To the right. Nope, up.
Where it says add to favorites, the little x. No, 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 no. No, 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 no.
Right, down, down, up, up, up.
What is this, Steve Harvey?
It just went past it.
Down, right.
To the right, other right, there you go.
There we go.
Wait, now where to go? Oh, great. Wait, Bill.
You broke it, Bill.
Maybe it's gonna be a ten-minute thing. How do I go back to it? Okay, go back to it. We'll get it someday, it's okay. There we go.
Government Services, Alderman Atack?
of the whole meeting in January. And we will be discussing code, the code provision review agendas and liquor licensing. And also, we'll have a closed session on collective bargaining.
Very good. City Services, Alderman Wolf?
The only thing that we have on City Services that will be on January 12th at the Committee of the Whole, surplus property, east side property maintenance, and truck chassis and equipment purchase. That's it.
Public Utilities, Alderman Brian?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have January 12th, the tentative wastewater treatment plant task order for construction management.
Okay. All right. We have any other business from the council? Callahan?
I just want to remind everybody, along with what Dave was just saying about the buildings, is January 29th, it's Friday, for the Chamber of Commerce's Ole Awards for the, for a lot of the buildings that have been going on this year.
Thank you, that's very pertinent. Anybody else? Okay, moving to the Mayor's Report, a couple of things. First of all, Alderman Wolf and I attended a meeting of the Tri-City Ambulance Board of Directors two weeks ago, I guess it was, at the Geneva Fire Department. And kind of the big news out of the group was, is that our administrator is telling us it looks like when things are over and done with, that our ambulance business this year is gonna have increased Tri-City-wide about 10 percent. That it's quite a jump in ambulance calls. Interestingly, one of the most common calls, not common, but regular calls we're getting now is for psychological evaluations. And in our case, in Batavia, the numbers are well over 100 calls in that realm this year. So, you know, the fire department is under a lot of demand and stress on this whole thing, and I just want to keep it under a radar screen that it is one of the city services we are providing, and it is experiencing significant growth. Second thing I want to report to you is I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Balling today, and he is in the process of kind of wrapping up all of his interviews with the groups. The session that we had with the members that had been asked to, citizens who had asked to meet with, from the city council, not everybody could make the meeting, so we, he ended up doing it in two meetings, and he still wasn't able to get everybody that was named he had. So now he's arranged in the next couple of days to kind of conclude the activity by phone interviews with the several individuals that he was not, were not either able to come to either one of the meetings that we put together. So he's telling me that over the next couple of weeks, he's going to write a report about this. But he would like to look, have us look at the possibility that at our Committee of the Whole meeting on January 12th, that maybe we put some of him on the agenda, wants me to make sure how the attendance is gonna be. He'd like to have as many of the members of the council present as possible. This probably could be, suggesting a couple-hour session that he'd like to have, and kind of go over what he's found out. But more interestingly, before he does that, he says he wants to pick your brains and get your two cents on what you think we should be specifically looking for. And then he's got, he's gonna have a written report that he's gonna submit to each of you to read about what he heard in these community sessions, so it gives you a better idea. And then maybe we'll kind of come together again for a kind of a final preparation before he puts together this profile that he's going to put out as part of the advertisement for the new person, solicitations for the new person. But he definitely wants your input on that before we go any further with this. So you're gonna be seeing him in January, certainly, one of the, probably, hopefully the meeting on the 12th, if not, maybe the 19th. But he wants to get a night when he can get most of everybody there. And finally, let's end the year on a good note. I am very pleased to report, as all of you know, in addition to my roles here, I do serve as the Chairman of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Plannings Council of Mayors, which is the group that regulates and distributes all the federal transportation dollars for the Chicagoland area on an annual basis. Had that job for a long time, and I take great pride in it, because we've seemingly done it without a lot of problems and shenanigans and hoopla. But because I am there, and I do have the opportunity to throw my two cents on the table, I have to be very careful that nobody says, well, Shelkey's the chairman of the group, so Batavia gets an inordinate amount of the money. So we, we have to share, and very much, we bend over backwards to make sure that we're doing this in a very equal process. But they, they hand down a pot of money to us at the local level, this is one of the beauties of this, there are, there are twelve subregional councils in the Chicagoland area, and the federal pot is divided to those twelve subregional councils, and then they, at the local level, make the decisions about who's gonna get what projects funded. So the feds stay out of it, the states stays out of it, and it truly becomes a local decision-making. So in our case, we are members of the Kane Kendall Council of Mayors, of which I am the chairman of that, and I have to be the chairman of that to be on the board in Chicago. So Kane County likes to keep me there, but anyway, we've had that meeting, and as a result of that meeting, the, the new program that's been issued now for the next three years, I'm very pleased to report that the Community of Batavia got funding for the, helped fund the bridge over Mill Creek at Deer Path Road. We got funds to rebuild, or resurface or redo South Prairie Street from Wilson down to Pine. If you go down there, that's roads in pretty rough shape. We also got money to resurface East Wilson Street from Redant Road out to Kirk Road, that's another stretch of road that needs to be redone. But the one I'm most excited about is, is that we did get two and a half million dollars to fund the rebuilding of Main Street from Water Street out to Van Ortry. And I think that's really gonna be helpful to us, because that may free up some money to do all the utility work that needs to be done there, specifically to begin to seriously respond to that combined sewer problem that we have on the southwest side of town. This will hopefully give us the ability to put a major separation sewer down Main Street there, that we'll be able to receive them out of that water and get it out of there, which is one of the problems that the engineers tell me we now continue to face. But it looks like, as the schedule goes for the distribution of that money, we won't do that project in '16, but it will be done in '17. And so, just so everybody knows, I'm very pleased that with the, with the four projects that we got, and some of this still has to be bid, and some of it will be funded on kind of a percentage of the cost.
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botaman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botaman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botaman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Resolution fifteen dash one fifty-one dash R is approved, thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. Moving to item number ten, which is ordinance fifteen dash sixty-four, amend portions of the Batavia Municipal Code Title One, Chapter Five. Who's got this one?
I do.
Alderman Atech?
Um, upon the recommendation of our city attorney, we, excuse me, it just popped out, he, in order to prepare the proper certification for, or the bond refunding that we approved a couple meetings ago, we have a recodified Title One, Chapter Five of our code under ordinance fifteen dash sixty-four. We took a couple provisions from outside of another chapter and renumbered this particular chapter, and everything else is the same. So I move that we adopt ordinance fifteen dash sixty-four as presented.
Second?
Move by Alderman Atech, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of ordinance fifteen dash sixty-four to amend portions of the Batavia Municipal Code Title One, Chapter Five as presented. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botaman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botaman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Motion to waive formal bidding is approved, thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. Moving to item number nine, which is resolution fifteen dash one fifty-one dash R, authorize, authorization to purchase network switches. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, your honor. This would be replacing the switches, network switches, there's thirteen building switches in five different city buildings that IT services, and most of them are over eight years old, and although they have functioned well during their lifetime, they are at the end of their useful life. Their reliability is starting to decrease to the point where they're having some problems with them, so they want to replace all of them. The authorization request is to purchase the switches from Presidio Incorporated for thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and four dollars. I'll make the motion that we approve resolution fifteen dash one fifty-one dash R.
Second?
Move by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of resolution fifteen dash sixty-four to amend portions of the Batavia Municipal Code Title One, Chapter Five as presented. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botaman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botaman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botaman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botaman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botaman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botaman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botaman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botaman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botaman?